We call this Rundle Planning meeting to order. It's a regular meeting, April 11th, 2019, 7:00 PM. We're in the MLDA Elementary School in the library. We have on the... Let's start with a roll call.
Marty, go.
Tom McGinn.
Susan Rock.
Jamie Lowery.
Mario Morin.
Rich Genon.
Jens Bergen.
Tad Berwick.
We have approval of the agenda. We have public comment. Approval of minutes for March 28th, 2019. We have two public hearings. One for a Rundle machine, a plenary site plan review, and another one for a driveway access site plan review. And we have pending applications. A Rundle machine, the driveway access. Raymond Acres, a re-subdivision of an approved subdivision. New applications. We have Motorland Classic Cars, a major conditional use permit application. And we have some land use ordinance revisions, an amendment to 10-636, plan review extension. And we need to schedule public hearings for land use ordinance changes. We'll have a planners' report and an update on the joint zoning meeting with the comp plan.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to see item six, new application. Item one of that new application we brought before item five.
Okay, so after the public hearings?
After the public hearing.
Okay, to expound all right?
Yeah, there's some issues with the applicant that I will discuss when we move it up forward.
Everybody okay with that?
For which?
Which ones? Motorland?
Motorland. We'll come right after the...
Right after the public hearings?
Can I ask, I mean, not to just be an antagonist about it, but I mean, typically, we do the new things at the end. And wondering...
Might go on with the waste their time here tonight.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
In Motorland?
No.
Yeah.
But I'd be afraid we'd be putting the others who are in line back. Making that way. Well, not because...
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's my concern is if we get into a prolonged conversation with them about whatever your concerns are, I mean, we're...
Can I bring up what my concerns are?
I have a feeling I know what they are.
I don't see why not. It's a discussion of moving the agenda item. He needs to be able to explain why.
My issue with that is is a $200,000 bond that hasn't been posted yet. And until that's paid, I don't believe we should be reviewing this application.
And I could respond to that?
At this point, it's just a question of where we're moving. The bond is related to the last permit that they got. It was not for...
All right, I'll amend my motion to move that up after the public hearing.
I would draw my first second and second that motion of Tom's.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to move Motorland Classic to item number five. It'd be the first one on the agenda after the public hearings. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Six to one.
That was Jamie.
Okay, public comment. Anybody? I was gonna say anybody that's not here on an application, but I think everybody's here.
Yeah.
I think somebody else wanna make a comment.
If you have a comment to make about something other than what's on the agenda. Hearing none, we'll move right along.
I went through it all quickly and I think it's all right. I have one little comment. It's on the third page, second paragraph. It's double negative. I think it might be better just to do it a little different. The board notes that this is not an insignificant shortfall. You just put that it is a significant shortfall. I think it might be stronger. I don't know if that's kind of wish to the sentiment that night. It means the same thing, I realize.
Yeah, no, no, make it more straightforward.
Yeah. Also, you've got Mr. Genon down twice, but I was here, so maybe...
Oh.
Hey, I made it twice to the same meeting.
Yeah, he made it twice.
We were particularly effective that night.
I wasn't. I was impersonating Rich that night. That was impersonating Rich. So with those two edits, I will make the motion. We approve the minutes as written, or those two edits?
For a second.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes as amended. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Us three.
Six in favor, one extension.
Are we gonna permanently shift the public comment ahead? Because that wasn't traditionally the second item. It was...
It's usually the third.
Approval of agenda, approval of minutes, public comment. So I will just adjust my...
We'll get it back the other way.
It's okay. I just wanted to adjust my template. If that was...
No sense in changing the template. We'll just move it back the other way. Okay, public hearings. Item number one, a Rundle machine, a plenary site plan review application, a determination of completeness. A proposal to construct a 22,163 square foot expansion to the existing manufacturing facility located on a 7.76 acre parcel tax map, 12 lot 7.3, located at 20 Technology Drive in the BI District with associated parking and site improvements. In addition, a Rundle machine also proposes to construct a new 11,200 square foot manufacturing facility on the adjacent 3.75 acre parcel tax map, 12 lot 7.2, with associated parking site improvements and interconnectivity with circulation and parking facilities on lot 7.3. DCV Properties is the owner and applicant, and Paul Gadboy PE is the authorized agent. Take it away, Paul.
All right, I'm gonna kinda keep it brief unless Mario wants me to go through a detailed explanation of the project. And I'll be glad to do that.
Just all the time you want, Paul.
Okay, I'll take as little time as I really would like to do. You know, so just for the public, myself wants to build a 22,000 square foot building adjacent to the existing as shown in yellow. Myself already added in addition to the existing garage, which is yellow, but maybe should be orange now, but it's existing. Also, he wants to propose to build 11,200 square foot annex building to complement his business along with associated parking. We did get the Anacor approvals to fill the wetlands. We've met the geologist comments as far as all their comments as far as DEP comes for nitrate studies and we build the nitrates. So they approved the nitrates, scientific soil surveys, and that type of thing related to geology. Just so Mario knows, this is why I consider this possibly a stream in this area. DEP came out and said it's not a stream, so we don't have to worry about being set backs from that resource as far as setback from streams. And I'm gonna leave it at that unless Mario has any questions or the board has any questions.
Just one thing since Mario's still here. The board would have to... The way it's done right now, there's... The ordinance requires a 15-foot vegetated buffer between along the property lines, the side property lines there. And the clearing, the clearing that's gonna have to be done there goes right up to the property line. The board can waive that if they find that there is existing features, natural features out there, natural buffering on the property that would be retained that would achieve the same effect as having a 15-foot. It's in section 66514. And so since Mario was the property owner next door, I guess...
I was gonna bring that up, not at the public hearing, but at the planning board level when we were doing it. First of all, I went through the AR standards. The AR standard says you get 10-foot buffer as far as I'm concerned.
What about the BI?
The AR district?
No, you're in the BI.
Oh, sorry. I was thinking about Rundle machine. We're in the BI district. So I take it all back. So yes, so what Ted's talking about, I have actually about 14 feet in this angle point to my pavement. I put buffers on this 15 feet. I'll have to do the BI district buffer requirements. I just know the AR buffer requirement. So yeah, I guess Mario can certainly weigh in on that if he thought there's a problem with trying to give myself one of 25,000 square foot building. I was kind of compressed as far as trying to get the 22,000 square feet in. So that's all I have to say about that at this time. So we are meeting, you know, obviously, I consider we meet more the buffer as you get away from that one point. But right now, from that point to the pavement, I have 14 feet.
Actually, I saw you cutting all the way though, Paul.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, it's gonna be grass. It's gonna be, you know, this is a...
It's a stream in its filtration basis.
So I mean, you can ask for the waiver.
Yeah.
And since I thought Mario was...
Yes, I was gonna bring that up at the next hearing, but I...
Well, then he's gonna stick around for that.
Well, he's not here anyway. That's right, so far as... Yeah, so I figured he's gonna be here. But certainly, you can discuss it, draw if you want to.
So am I hearing that correctly? We're within the...
Well, right now, I'm a foot from... But also, there's gonna be a landscape buffer. In the past, the board has allowed this is gonna be a vegetated swale. It's gonna be greenery. There's gonna be a berm here. We are gonna have some retainers, like with boulders. I mean, whether you consider that landscaping or not landscaping, you know, I don't think we have to buffer this because of between two business uses. It's not like we're trying to buffer a residential use from a business use. They're gonna say, yeah, we wanna definitely add some greens, greenery here. Again, I have no issues with at this side of the berm putting some buffer in here. No issues whatsoever.
So I guess, well, I guess we'll drive off that bridge when we get there.
Right. Anybody have any questions or comments for the applicant? Hearing none. I'm gonna close the public hearing at 7:20. And we will move on to item number two, driveway access site plan review. Request for a permit for an after-the-fact driveway access road constructed on a 31 acre parcel tax map, 12 lot 7, located at 2209 Portland Road in the BI, SO, and SP districts. Mario Burnett and Richard Paver, the owner applicants.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
You closed one public hearing, but you didn't open a second.
Thank you. I'll open the second at 7:20. Take it away, Mario.
What do you want me to say?
Does the board have any questions?
I think everybody came up and seen it, right?
Yeah.
Those are the other questions.
And does the other one? More than anything, because this is the public hearing.
This is it.
Okay. Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing at 7:21. And we will move into the pending application under revised agenda. That is going to be Motorland Classic Cars, a major conditional use permit application. A request to construct an additional 13 parking spaces and a tour bus parking area on both the applicant's parcel and an adjacent property, tax map 2 lot 1A, in support of the conversion of the 9,900... Should that say 9,900 square foot public auto showroom into an auto museum on a 4.9 plus or minus acre lot located at 2564 Portland Road, tax map 2 lot 1 in the BI District. Motorland LLC is the owner applicant of the tax map... Tax map 2 lot 1, EMP Properties is the owner of tax map... Tax map 2 lot 1A. And Sandra Gay SVO is the applicant's agent. Take it away, boss.
Would you like me to address the letter of credit first?
We would like, we would love you to address the $200,000 elephant in the room.
Yes, okay, I would be happy to do that. So we got Tad's planner's memo this morning. And as soon as we got it, I called Tim, who is traveling and not here tonight, and asked him about that. He... It was inadvertent. I'm actually surprised that a building permit issued without the bond being in place. It's not something that I get involved in once, I mean, once that becomes the contract or whoever goes to pull the permit usually takes care of that. So I wasn't aware of it. Tim called his bank. He was ready, he was planning on having an issue, a letter of credit, but then had a question about the amount. If it should still be 200,000, because the work is 90% completed at the site right now. So we spoke with the bank, Camden National Bank. She suggested he put up a $40,000 escrow account to cover the completion of the current courtyard project, which is 90% complete. And for the improvements, the adjacent lot for parking and landscaping. Letter from bank that money is available to make improvements. She explained that the letter of credit would take about two weeks for the bank to process. So that was the email that I got from Tim in response. I guess I would like to request that we move forward with this initial review tonight. The board's not gonna be making any decisions. There's not gonna be any approvals tonight. Hopefully, the next time they will be. But so we could just move it along. And I will make certain that this gets taken care of immediately. But I would like, you know, some feedback, I guess, on the amount at this point. Since that... Because the letter of credit normally would be released over time as this work was done, so that the town would be holding something less than the $200,000 surety right now. So whatever you feel is an appropriate amount is what I will go back to Tim with and tell him that that's what the bank has to do. And I'll leave that up to Tad and the board. But I will assure you that we will get it done immediately.
Gentlemen, if you remember, we had another applicant who did not give us his money. And he completed the project, and we still made him go out and come up with the entire amount of the bond and secure it.
Professional regulation.
Jason Meto Don one...
Jiggle.
Jiggle. Did all of the work, was supposed to have given us $114,000, I believe. And did not do so.
Just so you're as honest about the work, though, because you release the bond as soon as the work is done. So if the work is...
Oi.
We made him post the bond.
And then immediately released it?
And we released it. But we made him post the bond.
Okay.
I think, I think we're using all sorts of different words here. So I'm gonna jump in there and use the appropriate terminology. He had a letter of credit. Drawdown letter of credit. Gave us that, then he submitted invoices to me to show that he had spent that money. And I had gone and done inspections and had my guys go out and do inspections, my engineer. Then, then we released the money in phases. The other way, there's two, there's multitude of different ways you could do it. You do the letter of credit, because I think that's probably the easiest. The other way you could do it is a tri-party agreement.
And?
Tri-party agreement means the bank holds the money. They cannot release any of that $200,000 until the inspection is done. And I sign it, and the engineer signs it, and the inspector signs it, and then drawdown goes.
Which would you prefer?
I don't care. I prefer not to hold money.
Okay.
But they would have to use our form.
Has any inspection been done?
And I would question, and I'm not sure that all of it's been done, Sandra, because there was, a lot of that money was piled into that courtyard area, and I don't think there's been any improvements.
I also have some information there's on the updated that, because a lot of that got stopped when winter came.
Yeah.
And we have dates of when everything's moving forward on. So I can, I can share that with you, too. But is the tri-party agreement language, is that in the ordinance? Or is that something that's separate?
No, that's something separate.
And I can get that from you? And you have a form, you said, or something?
Yeah, I have a form. The bank fills it out. And then what happens with the tri-party agreement? You fill out these, there's the actual contract. It's a one-pager. Best kind of contract to have. And then there's a drawdown forms that list all of the, all of the items by either lump sum or by unit cost. And then the drawdown that you do is based on what's done. So we put in five catchphrases. Oh, we did this whole section. There's a cost for that, and then we inspected and draw it down. Depends how quickly, which, you know, it's expedited by how fast they can move. The letter of credit takes longer. If Tim's got money in the bank that's already, that's supposed to be used for this project, that's usually faster way to do it. If it's a letter of credit where he either has to make deposits or he has to put up collateral or something, then it usually takes longer. It all depends.
All right.
Whichever way is faster.
I will get on this tomorrow.
Okay, I won't be here tomorrow, so I'm gonna have to email it to you.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Because I have to close out this place, go back, shut down the office, and I'll email it to you.
I appreciate that.
It will be, it will not have everything in it, and you're gonna have to do some filming of the ones yourself.
Okay. Well, and I'll, I'll discuss with Tim which of the two, with letter of credit or the tri-party agreement. But I will get back to you with something immediate on that. And I apologize to the board for this. I don't know how I have to.
Well, I have a question. So 90% has been done. What 10% is left?
I will tell you. Let's see. Courtyard completion. Jeff Rand at, I'm reading from Tim's email here. Jeff Rand at Rand Stoneworks is set to resume completion of the courtyard project next week now that springs arrive. About 90% of the work is complete. The remaining work to be completed includes install custom fence, which is currently on board with a manufacturer in Ohio, slated for delivery to job site in mid-May. The lighting, lowman seed, asphalt sealant, and parking lot striping, and miscellaneous final steps for planning.
So all the building, all of that, whatever, to the, you know, infrastructure, to the buildings themselves has been done?
Right, well, the building was already done. Most of this, most of this was for the outside work. So they got started on it, and it was late fall, and then they just stopped for the winter. So now they're gonna finish it up. I don't, Claude, can you remember what else? So it's 90%, what else was...
I haven't been here for a while.
So what constituted the 90%? So...
Well, I think, you know, right now, they did put all the paper blocks in this area, which is probably a bulk of the work. They have all the other drainage piping in. They do have granite curving in for the island. That's all I can remember. They have some seats here, granite seats, because this obviously, there's some seating area that steps up to raise the septic system bed. So if I had to go by memory, I don't know if there's any landscaping, lowman seed. I think what Sandra mentioned seems logical, but I haven't really been in attention to it because it wasn't part of my preview to do so. But yeah, I know that this courtyard is all block and brick.
Is it all, is all the infrastructure in? You had drains, you had...
Yeah, yeah, all the drains are in. Yeah, all the drains are in for the infrastructure in this area, which is primarily a small little field inlet, so in that area. 20 of them, they came out of the wood now. And yeah, the granite curving's in.
I don't think the landscaping's in.
No, that was one of the lowman seeds.
Yeah. I know what Sandra said, I don't think the lights are in. I can't remember if they were, but I don't do vice. They have some light poles in here, light up that area. Fence, you're right, you have a fence. That's not, I didn't see that, but...
The condo, it's in for the whites, huh? Condo, it's in for the whites, huh?
Oh, yeah, it has to be, because this is all...
I was gonna say, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, paper blocks or granite, or whatever it's called, paper blocks. So I'm sure they probably did do it, but they didn't. They took all the paper blocks. So I would say yes to all that.
Well, I think we...
To the chair.
Start with that full mount, and we'll do the drawdown from there.
Yeah, Marty.
Past history. We have been round and round on many different occasions, as built, and where built, may be built, or anything else. It has not had any inspections or anything else as we did before. Full mount.
I agree with you, Marty. My, my problem is that the owner knew at the, at the end of the last meeting when we granted that permit, $200,000 before anything gets done. He has, he has consistently ignored what he's supposed to go on his permits. And I think at this point, he needs to, he needs to come up with the $200,000. And I think he needs to come up with that before we proceed forward to hear the current application. He's, he's in violation of a contract that he made with us, and it's not the first time it's happened.
Well, I can't respond to any of that at all, actually.
I know. But you can, you can relate to him, the sentiment of the board. And I, I think that we should table this current application until he has posted the $200,000 motion.
Does the board, does the board concur?
What's that?
Does the board concur?
I do. I make a motion that we table this application from that $200,000 bond has been posted.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Aye.
The motion has been made and seconded to post, to defer the current application until the $200,000 bond has been posted.
I have a question, but I'm just trying to figure out how to best phrase it. But go ahead.
No, 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 no. You have a question. The only thing is, we've been round and round on this many a times on different avenues.
I'm gonna not ask it.
No, ask it soon, please.
I'm gonna pass.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous.
Well, thank you for moving this up in the agenda.
Yeah, right. Sandra, I will, when I'm, this is over, I'll go back and I'll...
Mending applications. A Rundle machine, plenary site plan review. Determination of completeness. Proposal to construct 22,163 square foot expansion to the existing manufacturing facility located on a 7.76 acre parcel tax map, 12 lot 7.3, located at 20 Technology Drive in the BI District with associated parking and site improvements. In addition, a Rundle machine also proposes to construct a new 11,200 square foot manufacturing facility on the adjacent 3.75 acre parcel tax map, 12 lot 7.2, with associated parking site improvements and interconnectivity with circulation and parking facilities on lot 7.3. DCV Properties is the owner and applicant, and Paul Gadboy PE is the authorized agent.
Okay, I guess we should talk about Tad's memo. I think that would be the first place to start. I know he's talking about the maybe additional screen on Route 1 for the first parking lot. Are you talking about this parking lot, I mean?
Yeah, yeah, because I went out and took a look, Paul. It's thin in a few places. But I even wanna step it out, but it's a field adjustment. Also, I'm not sure you're gonna need... I'd rather, I would recommend, it's up to you. I'd rather recommend using something like a... Or phrase your fur. Because it's all sitting down right now. The second thing is, as I told you, you don't want that stuff in there. What we're gonna do is, a lot of them, they eat up and don't get the sand rich enough.
So I'm wondering if we could meet sometime next week? Kind of discuss the issue that you think you should do. My thoughts, fine. I thought we, if we had a little thin here, we're obviously, we can plant some new trees in that area. If it is thin, I have no problems about planting some trees along the street.
Some of the mud is here. Can we pick it out of?
Yes, totally fine with that. That was my stab at landscaping. I read requirements on that particular emerald green alaberty. And you know, it's basically recommended by you on center. So that's what I did.
As far as your fur, there's gonna be patching on the center. So you're gonna be...
Yeah, so I'm totally fine with changing that. So myself, I have no problem landscaping this thing so it comes out nice for the board. We have no issues with that. Also, I guess the same number two is the same question as far as maintaining a Portland little tree line. No problem putting some trees back in there, and no moving, no shrubbing around. We don't have any issue with that. Again, the 15-foot buffer, I guess that's where we're at right now. And so again, I have 14 feet of the pavements from that corner of Mario's property.
You have boulders in there.
Yes.
You have a boulder wall.
Yeah, a boulder wall right here. So if you want to consider that landscaping.
Yeah, I know.
You know?
It's not landscaping, it's buffer screening. And that's, and so.
What did they meant, the BI zone?
It says screening.
Now, that's the back of the building.
Yeah, no, but it says from all, 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 it says from, I mean, we can't, from inside and the rear.
I can't put a fence here. But I don't think, I think that's.
The board could waive it.
I don't think that's.
It all depends. Well, what we have, we have some, you have this, you have a lot of weather in here, the first place, you do have some, but, this is up on the here.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, so, yeah, I mean, I could certainly put a fence on top of that berm, which I don't really wanna do.
Well, if you want it to stay as naturalistic as possible, I don't think you wanna construct all these fences and make it look like a, a prison.
Exactly.
Fences will all apply to the, the lot.
I mean, you know.
I don't need any fence between my property, businesses like to see other businesses.
Yeah.
I don't need any fence, you know, I'm not requiring that. I know what kind of John Paul and Marcel does there, so I'm good with anything they wanna put there.
Thank you, Mario. And in fact, is, and also. We had more room at D E P because we had to catch knives when they first set it, I had to put a small, uh, drift line, filter bed to capture that right off.
Yeah, but there are also two, like Marcel said, for, if he wanted to, he would go around the back of the building in case he wants to mow it or anything else to maintain it. Um, the existing property on the other side i- is natural and wild, and the property owner is not gonna be swimming over to the backside of that corner. I, and there's enough covering on the other side.
Asking for a waiver.
I think you should have a waiver.
Any others here, and?
Paul, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, happy to make a motion to grant the applicant a waiver of the requirement of a buffer at the south, Mr. Lee? What corner is that?
Back of the building.
Yeah.
Just putting the southern around.
I'll second that if, if you're.
Six-six-five E.
A waiver from, in accordance with six-six-five.
Okay.
If you read your motion, I'll second it.
Motion's been made.
I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to grant a waiver in accordance with section six-six-five E. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is opposed, it is unanimous.
And so the last thing was, uh, obviously, we, we still going around with lighting, I did talk to the lighting designer based on the sidewalk about not having any lights in the, in the middle of the parking area. Marcel would love not to put lights in that area, cause obviously, um, it's kind of a hazard for plowing and for backing into, but, um, Jim says that he feels that we need a meeting with me and Tad to discuss the ordinance, to discuss the lighting requirements, um, to see if we can make something like that happen. Uh, myself, been using this building, we've got some lights mounted here, we're gonna have some lights mounted on this building as we discussed previously, uh, but I need to sit down with Jim, and Jim suggested we sit down with Tad. And I guess the ordinance is pretty tough to accommodate what he's trying to, what has to be done, I guess, from what I understand.
On that, I, I didn't know we had any minimum requirement for lighting, I, I thought.
We do.
I had no idea.
Yeah, well, that's what you guys want to do.
But we're saying you have to have lighting.
Well, we didn't, we didn't necessarily, it was hell, it was presented to us, we didn't, a lot of times, a lot of times, some of us rejected the thought of having it.
Well, I don't know.
And I'll stand on that point.
You, you were here before I was, so, uh.
I still got overruled.
This is the lighting plan, that, this is the, the same lighting that we had for things since two thousand and three.
I think.
Still got overruled.
I think this raises an issue.
Yeah.
Because this is, this is for a determination of completeness, and if the, if the lighting architect is recommending a meeting between Paul and the town planner, I don't know if we can determine this to be complete.
I think we determined it to be complete at the last meeting.
Yeah, we was determined to be complete already.
I asked, I asked for waivers.
I just, never mind.
And we did, and we did send a lighting plan that we haven't changed.
We have on record.
We did send a lighting plan that we haven't changed.
Is this something that, that can be waived?
No.
Funny, I've always thought of the, the lighting requirements being maximum, like.
Yeah.
It's maximum and minimum.
And do the lights on the building light it enough to meet the requirements?
It's very well lit right now.
I think this, this raises the perfect example of that, that probably, not having a truly complete application.
Well, it sounds like it's, it sounds like it's complete.
We have an application that's complete. We showed you, we showed you the lighting plan that meets the minimum standards, we was brought up in the sidewalk that we didn't feel that they needed lights in this area, which I brought up to my client, and he would rather not have lights there. I talked to Jim, the lighting designer, and he said, we need to sit down with Tad and him and me and the client to work out some of the details, but we have a lighting plan.
Oh yeah, oh no, I, I agree, you do have a lighting plan, so.
And then the lights on the building, that might sufficiently light that area?
The lighting plan, the lighting plan shows lights that will.
Yeah, that's the problem.
That's the issue.
They have poles in the center.
Pole lights, pole lights.
And the point is, if the, if the applicant wants to, I mean, the way, like, there's two ways this can happen. You proceed with it the way it is, and then ask for amendment later.
Oh no, no, we're gonna come back, but for, for final, we're gonna address the writing, come back with a writing plan, and resubmit it, and make sure it's, we got our eyes across the teeth, we just, Jim says we should sit down with Tad.
Okay.
So.
I don't know why.
Except for financial reasons, cause obviously lighting's really expensive, are there other reasons why?
There's no, there's, it's not even a financial reason why we, it's a, it's a plowing nightmare.
Plus, plus the other thing is.
I think that, that's something I have to put, take into consideration, right?
The other thing is, also, practice.
We're gonna talk to Jim and you, and we're gonna see if Jim can put some sort of lights that work off the buildings, and maybe he can work with it, you know, I guess we had a taller light, but we have to deal with the ordinance.
Yeah.
And the four-to-one ratios and Jim saying.
Well, the four-to-one ratio's an issue.
I think that's what Jim's saying.
We have places we can put it here.
Yes.
He can put a type five lens.
We already have, I think we already have some there, then it's the uniformity ratio, the four-to-one maximum.
So four-to-one max.
So you can't meet all the requirements that's written in this zoning ordinance, cause it was basically poorly written, I guess.
Yes, it is.
So.
It is.
We're, he's trying to, you know, work with something that's poorly written, and we are suffering because of that, so we wanna have a meeting with Tad.
Okay.
And maybe we can work it out, but if not, then we're gonna have to.
Now that we've had the public hearing, we have thirty days to make a decision.
No, no, you guys haven't changed that yet?
We're talking about a town meeting. Come on, Paul, we're going to town meeting in, 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 in a few weeks.
Good, so hopefully they'll change it in town meeting.
But you'll be on the wrong side of the thirty, town meeting's more than thirty-eight weeks.
No, but I'm sure you'll find a solution with Tad. I'm sure that is good for you.
Well, so.
We'll, we'll try to extend you.
My question is, we're gonna get final approval sub D E P, which I'm okay with.
Yes, yes.
Okay, good, okay, good.
Cause like, how far out are you on that?
I, I emailed Bob again today, he emailed me back two weeks ago, saying he's been really busy on large part, he's gonna get back to it. Uh, we did get that totally, George just got back, and he approved all the, sold maps, and then, and then he hired, and then he reviewed the nitrate studies, so. I'm still waiting, the Amicore will get the proof of it.
And you also, the nitrate study works.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I read it.
So, and Bob had the email back, I said, you know, we're out, so. Marcel wanting to stay on every day now, basically. Cause you know, two weeks ago, did he back on it, and I said, what's the status, and he said, I will follow, so you know, I don't know, like, if they know that month. I don't know.
Well, I'm gonna go next week.
Okay, good, so we can sit down and do landscaping.
So go right over there and get this for sale.
And then hear Jim.
Yep.
So yeah, so, uh, obviously, I won't be submitting, uh, for, today, for next, two weeks from today, so that means I gotta have it done in two weeks, or I'm gonna be back within thirty days, that makes it pretty tough to do.
Yeah, it does.
You know what I mean, at the time, I had a meeting.
Well, you could always ask for the extension for that.
The other thing is.
And you could also stick around and help debate it, cause you're gonna be debating it during.
I'm sure.
The other, the other thing is, so he can complete his application, so he can order his building and everything else. This is what.
Well, it's still, it's still, he can, yeah, he can order the building, but he's, he's still pending D E P.
That's right.
That's the problem, is they've got a site location from the townhouse.
You put it out.
Until they get back, they can't do anything, you don't wanna make any commitments until that comes back.
Don't want to anticipate having that.
Well, they have what, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and eighty now?
And how long, how long are they waiting?
They're turning in what, I can tell you when I turned it in.
I think December.
Yeah.
That was a difficult month.
Actually, well, you did it in November.
But they probably didn't accept it for processing until a couple, probably after the first of the year, so they're looking at.
No, they took their check.
Of course they did.
Oh yeah, ten thousand dollar fee.
Ten thousand dollars, just a little bit.
Yeah, actually, you, you, uh, we have, where is it?
I've got it.
Submitted the application, the D E P on December, no, uh, yeah, in December, December twelfth.
Well, it's dated November twenty-sixth.
Yeah, you, November twenty-sixth, I have to, I have to, I have to Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we gotta do public care, anything notified the public, and you have.
So, in the next sixty days, you should hear from them one way or another.
Well, well, we're.
Hold it down.
No, it's so frustrating.
That's right. So, I will, I will call him tomorrow, see if he picks up.
Yeah. So, going back to landscaping, it might seem picky, but it, you don't have any dimensions where that pavement, or, or, near route one? Could you go in a dimension that could, I know we, we might be all measurable and scale, but, but just to.
You want to imagine from this little turnaround area back to.
Yeah, to the property line.
I think I told you where was the last meeting, but, yeah, absolutely.
Anything else for the applicant?
Not for me.
Okay.
Paul, do you get a, do you get a call?
Yes.
One here Monday, but, you know.
Yeah, I'll call you Tuesday.
Who's there once?
Yeah, we discussed landscaping, and maybe I.
Yeah, maybe go out and do a sidewalk.
Perfect.
Yeah, one here, one here, one here, two here, three.
At you, perfect.
Yes, of course.
Next item. Item number two, driveway access site plan review, a request for a permit for an after-the-fact driveway access road constructed on a thirty-one acre parcel, tax map twelve lot seven located at twenty-two zero nine Portland Road. In the B I S L A S P districts, Mario, Benette, Richard, Pete are the owners and applicants. Gentlemen, any questions for the applicant?
No.
No.
I think we need a motion.
For approval?
For approval.
Move to approve?
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve, the driveway access. Any discussion?
Nope.
Here we.
Just, just, just for clarity, a lot of things that were requested to be waived, do we have to consider them, I mean, I'm, I'm alright with approving it, but I didn't wanna. Do we, um. Probably bond, sure, that, all that, and then should we? Have we addressed that yet, or?
I thought we had.
Okay, that's no, cause we have to.
I thought we addressed it, that's how we got to the public.
This was, just, just, just to, just to.
I think that wasn't there then.
Well, Mario, this is a, after the fact, and this is for the, the deposition of the material there. Mario knows that when he sells it, or, or new use comes in.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to go through this whole thing. The road's very well built, but, I mean, that will be part of the application.
I just saw on the way, I, I.
Cause they'll have to have a survey for that.
I didn't know they were addressing, I was gonna make a motion to, to, uh, accept the waiver, so.
Well, you actually kind of did that.
It's already been done, so.
How would that come forward, how would that, how would we have that institutional memory about that, if it's eight years from now?
It'll be in the files. It'll be in the record, it'll be in the file. And make it a condition to be approved of then, that the applicant has to come back and have that, the, the road will have to meet the standard at the time that the, that the, um, cause this is just an access driveway. This is not a commercial driveway that he's ready to build off of, this is an access driveway, so you can sort of market it. And then whoever comes, whoever sells it to, or if they decide to develop it, then has to come back and make whatever improvements are necessary in order to make it a road for access, for accessibility.
I think that.
But this is just so they can get in.
Preliminary stuff.
The notes have to look, that this is not an accepted private, private way.
Commercial.
It will need to be upgraded in the event that it is, it is ever developed back, where it's simply gained access as required by the D E P.
It's hard to write the digits.
Yeah, D O two.
There isn't even a right way along, that's the point, it's just an access driveway into a piece of property, so all that will have to occur when they, so they're either sell it as a parcel, as a full parcel, or as a subdivision, you know, so divide it out and then that parcel's out there.
I'm just gonna sell the whole place, or, they'll be, whoever buys it, they can deal with it.
That's, that's the problem.
I think we discussed that only later, we didn't sign it.
Move it.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, congratulations. You're not.
Forty-six points. That was easy.
So, the next item, item three, Raymond Acres, a re-subdivision of an approved subdivision, a proposed re-subdivision of lot five dash zero three addition of land from tax map thirty lot five A to create a fifth lot in the Raymond Acres subdivision of twenty-two Black Dollar Road in the R two A S P district. Nicholas Raymond is the applicant, Marion Raymond is the property owner. If you remember the last time we asked, uh, for some information from the town attorney, and she has not been able to get back to us with it, I believe there's.
There was a memo sent out.
A memo sent out on that.
With both, uh, his attorney contacting Leah, and, and vice versa, of communication back and forth, and also.
Yep.
Uh, past histories of ex-planners and ex-chairmen of the board.
The point being, none of that is taking place at this point, so I don't think that we, we actually need to do anything. We can't, still waiting on the town attorney.
Just a question, so was the gentleman that was here with them when they came to discuss the waivers, was he their attorney?
Yes.
Or was he just here as a?
Surprise.
Yeah, cause he really never identified himself as doing.
Well, he, he went to Rayman's lot two.
He was incognito.
Well, you know, he, his client is right out there, he knows what he wants, and he's the kind of guy that.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what he, you know, what his role was supposed to be, cause he didn't really say when he introduced himself, you know, midway through.
Yeah, but he was, he was asked questions, until he, he did volunteer that he was, but otherwise, he was, uh, a, a person speaking with no name or no, uh, affiliation at the time, until he was called upon to answer the question.
And Leah apologized, but she had been in court, and up in Augusta in court, she, you know, not only, who's she getting, she's going filing, which she also is the attorney for her company. I have a meeting scheduled with her on next Friday. Next Friday, we're gonna discuss it, and then we're gonna talk to the attorney, the applicant's attorney, and, and tell them, show them what we found, but actually, the, the board, we'll begin on a written report, although, yeah, that's what, you know, what waivers will be legitimate, what you have to do to ensure that you meet some threshold standards for granting these waivers.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so, once we hear from Leah, we can proceed forward.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Uh, under planners' business, are you gonna bring up the other subjects that you were speaking of to fill us in?
Yeah, whatever you wanna know.
No, I mean, I said at, not at this time, but at. Planner's report.
You'll remind me, won't you?
Oh, yes.
I think.
That, that brings us to land use ordinance revisions. Paul left.
He wanted.
He left.
He wanted to get in on that discussion.
I think we know where he stands.
I agree. You know, I, I think the, I think the biggest problem we have is, and, and it showed up tonight, cause there are addition, we deemed the application complete, and there were additional things that, that. He needs to provide to, to Tad, we could, we could have ruled on that tonight and said that it is complete, or not that it's complete, we could have gone through the findings of fact, that there are changes that are going to get made based on, uh, the sidewalk and, and the discussions that have been had. So I think that it's, I, I, we may have been premature in determining that the application was complete and scheduling a public hearing.
I, I disagree.
Okay.
I think, I think you can have a complete application and have room within the process to change things within your initial application, as either you get discussion from the planning board, public comment, sidewalks, or whatever.
Okay.
I don't think that just because you're saying an application is complete, that you're saying that that's the only, you know, that, that. I don't think that just because you're saying an application is complete, that you're saying that that's the only, you know, that, that initial plan is what you have to approve or not.
Okay, and, and, and I can understand that, and I think that that's a valid point. The problem that we're faced with is that we had the public hearing, and now based on the fact that we've had the public hearing and the application has been determined to be complete, which triggered the public hearing. We're now looking at, at a thirty day period of time in which to make a decision. The public hearing should probably come sooner, so that other people can be involved and give us some input to. Let the abutters know, let everybody else know, this is what's going on, so that, so that we could then move forward. We would then have to figure out at what point do we decide that we're going to review, because we don't wanna constantly have to go back. Have, have the public hearing, have the applicant submit stuff like tonight, and he comes and he, he brings us back a change in a couple of weeks with more information. Well, what if they decide that they have even more information two weeks later that they, that they want? At some point, we have to, to say, that's as much information as we need, and we will make a decision based on what we have. As, as opposed to constantly having to make changes, because if you remember, the reason that we did this is because we got accused of dragging our feet and never getting anything accomplished. And Paul was one of the people who didn't like the fact that it stretched out for a long period of time, because we did constantly go back and allow them to make changes. But, but.
To the chair's question. To the queer, do they, they make changes to, or was it amended? Now, there's two different things there.
They were changed, they weren't amendments.
Because as they did tonight, they had submitted everything.
Yep.
Okay, and the fact is, after another meeting or anything else, it can be amended, because it's already been completed, uh, deemed complete.
If, if we had voted on it, then they would have had to have submitted an amendment to the plan and gone through that process. And, and I, is there some way that, that we can avoid all of that?
Well, so, and this is the perspective of a complete and utter neophyte when it comes to this kind of stuff.
Probably would be.
But I think there has to be some wiggle room for refinements, and I don't know if that's where Jamie was going. I mean, there are, there are substantive changes that, you know, kind of ma- change the project, the nature of the project. As it was originally intended, and then there are refinements like this lighting. So for instance, Ted could find with the lighting guy and whatever, that there, that there is sufficient light. Or that there are solutions on the building so that they can avoid having to put, you know, lighting poles in the middle of their parking lot. I mean, there may be, so to me, that's a refinement and not a, a wholesale change to the plan.
But if we accept the plan the way it's presented, then those, those lights are gonna be in the middle of that parking lot, because that's the way it was presented to us, and that's what we vote on. That's, to me, that's the issue. Well, it's, it's a combination of things, but you've given, you've given us a set of plans that we have said are complete, and we can make a decision based on the information we have. If the lights are in the center of the parking lot on the plan and we vote on it, then the applicant has to abide by that unless he wants to come and offer an amendment to the plan. I'm trying to figure, there's gotta be some way that we can work through that and not be up against the time deadline. And if that means that we hold a public hearing earlier and we change the ordinance, or that we don't deem the application complete until we're absolutely, completely ready to proceed. But if we do that, then we have to change the, the timing of the public hearing, because remember, the public hearing does not show up until we determine complete, a complete application.
Well, and that sort of puts everything at a kind of limbo, and, you know, it's, it, time is money to a lot of these people, and they, you know. Want a decision understandably, understandably, and I don't know, Ted, is there an equitable way to allow for subtle refinements with, and?
That's what the extensions are for. I mean, you know, frankly, you know, I've, I've been on the other side of the table, and Jamie is still, and, you know, if you don't have your application together. But when you bring it in, you should be pretty much set with what you want to do, and yes, you're gonna have to make changes based on what the board says. But when the board says, I'm, I'm, I'm good, we've got everything we need to make a decision, I would wanna make sure that, and I ask for determination of completeness, that. They're happy with what I've got. And so if I've got a, if I, I have, I submitted a plan that shows there's, there's no, nothing against to Marcella or anything, but if I've got a plan that shows, shows, uh, light poles. On bases, raised bases in the middle of my parking lot, I should pretty much know right away that I don't wanna do that.
Right.
Shouldn't submit that.
Right.
And I'm not, I'm not blaming them for that, but I'm saying, you wanna, you wanna make sure that you come to a resolution of that before you may, you realize that you're at the complete stage. So there's a, there's a, there's a dual responsibility.
So it makes you wonder, you know, and I hate to play Perry Mason, but then it makes you wonder why the reversal. If it got put into the plan in the first place and it was acceptable, and they thought they needed those lights, all of a sudden, they realize that it makes the parking lot a nightmare? I mean.
Well, I think, I think.
No, just trying to understand.
It seemed to me that the, that appeared to them that gee, maybe there's another way around doing this, and we don't have to put up with that, you know, plowing issue.
Yeah, I mean, it makes perfect sense to me.
Why it's an issue.
When we were at the sidewalk, we.
We discussed this.
We discussed and realized it just doesn't make sense, so that, they thought they had no choice, maybe.
Oh, I wasn't at that sidewalk, so I don't know.
But the other thing is, besides plowing purposes, okay, the thing is, that we haven't brought up, is the fact is that. You are just having small little trucks making delivery, okay? We have full eighteen wheelers that are coming in, so eighteen wheelers and light posts and everything else does create a lot more problems, okay?
Makes sense to me.
So that's why they really didn't want light posts in the middle, not necessarily for only plowing purposes, but also for logistics. Because at the present time where they have it, they don't have light poles, and they can load and unload at their loading docks as is at present.
Because also the loading docks changed now.
Yes, I realize that, loading dock is coming from an existing building going to, to the new building. I, I realize that, but that also creates a ninety degree turn. And turn up our tractor trailer to swing and maneuver and get into the hole. Which, which light posts.
And, and to Susan's point, you know, maybe they should have thought about that. I don't think they thought about it until the sidewalk, when we asked them about it.
No, he, we didn't mention it, but turn around, Paul said they were gonna be putting it over if they needed to, because he thought there was enough lighting already present, existing. And then with, with the other new building, to follow the same lines so that it would be.
Well, the, the lighting is a pretty, pretty hard and fast section of the ordinance, so I think.
But look, look what we went through with Weir's.
Yeah, no, but my point is that, that if Paul is saying that he and Jim Stockman and Ted should get together to discuss it, I think that that's a valid point. He should have made that point before we determine the application to be complete.
And, and if you change your mind, there is leeway for the extensions to be able to do that. The, the one thing that we wanna make sure that we don't do, and this is one of the reasons why we have limitations on that, is exactly to ensure that we don't. That it doesn't appear like the planning board is dragging out, because that is a criticism, and if you, and, and this is, this may not be a popular thing to be explained up, but I remember when I first arrived here. You'd been considering to do all these applications, all of their stuff together as a unit for a year. That had gone on for a year, do you remember that?
Yeah.
And said, we gotta get this stuff out of here, we can't just keep, because what happens is, not only does it drag it out of the applicant, not only does it exhaust the planning board. But, you know, then it has a, it has a, it has a public relation, it presents public relations and perceptual problems for the planning board, that you, that we don't need.
And I'm glad to bring up that point, because I'd rather avoid that, we really don't, I don't think we drag our feet. A lot of times, they need more information, they are not doing something we're requiring, and it stretches out, and, and, and it, if. We have that one more thing that allows us to stretch it out legitimately, I think we'll look bad, not them. We do have the mechanism of extensions, we can get a couple of extensions, so they'll easily fit, get this all done with, within an extension.
We can leave it right where it is, you know, and, and they can ask for two extensions.
But there are, there is, the, the intent of a public hearing first is just to get out the public, so it's not, it doesn't look like it's backdoor dealing. But also to bring up issues like at a, um, a new road, the, who did it, the trucking, I forget what the name of it. B and B Trucking, there were legitimate things that were brought up and we didn't know about until that public hearing. So it's important we have that, and, and I guess for them, the clock is ticking, or did tick down.
For B and B?
For B and B, we, we, we.
Well, they did nothing.
We did.
No, they did nothing, they did nothing, it wasn't us, Tom.
But we had to make the decision to, to, to deny that.
And we went, we, we didn't deny it, we declared, no, boy, we could have denied it within thirty days. We could have said, deny it after thirty days, but we kinda let them.
We would have.
Try to work it out, we thought they were working out, and then we didn't find out until far along the, the, the process, when, when the daughter called me up and said. Hey, what's going on? I said, aren't you talking to them? And they said, and we haven't talked to them since the public hearing.
Really?
Yeah, and that's what happened, that's when, you said, well, we gotta put it in for next, because it's been six months.
That could happen, and maybe, whether they're trying to avoid each other or not, that, that's beside the point. Something comes up at a public hearing, Ted, thirty days to remedy, it, it's, it's asking a why. So I, I, I think the public, I'm thinking the public hearing maybe can be in a different order.
Right. Do, do it at the start of the process.
Within thirty days of the certification.
But, but, hold on, my concern with that is, if you do that. I think, I think legally, we have a little bit of a risk there, because somebody could contend that a public hearing was opened and then closed. And then not, all the information wasn't provided to them through the, the course of getting an application to be able to then comment on it. If you have a complete application, then everything is out for public to review and to be able to comment on. Instead of getting this piecemeal of information through multitude of public hearings, whenever, you know, a controversial project comes about and, and you've got a lot of other things that come out.
Yeah, just like the golf course.
Well, you know, like, like pave tech.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that, that if, if you don't have a complete application, where this is what the applicant throws out there and says, this is what we're proposing to do. Planning board, neighbors, you know, town planner, everybody, this is your chance to review what we have and say yea or nay, you know, provide your comments. I think you, you've gotta start with a complete application, ultimately. I think, you know, you look at, at this ten six three, the logic of it, you know, the sidewalk sort of, you can, it's got the language where you can adjust where you put that. But to me, the, the, the way the progression works is very logical. An application is submitted, it's deemed complete, and then the board moves through the process. You know, whether it's sidewalk before or after, public hearing, you know, you've got all of the things out there, groundwater studies and lighting studies and noise studies and everything. Is out there for the public to comment on. And then you can move through. Now, I mean, I would say that the argument would be there for a sidewalk to be earlier and advertised to the public. You know, so that they've got to start to get a general idea of what's going on. But, I mean, ultimately, I don't think our process is, is really that broken. I mean, looking at it, if, if it would pass muster at town, uh, meeting, make it instead of two thirty day, two sixty day. I guarantee you, most, most projects would, would be well and done within a sixty day extension.
Once, a sixty day?
Two sixty.
Two sixty days.
That's a hundred and twenty days, it's half a year. If you can't do it in a half a year, you don't belong.
A third of a year.
Right.
But yeah, right.
You, you don't belong there, you don't have your project together in your mind. Or there's so many problems that are endemic. A, either you, you, you haven't, and you haven't provided the adequate solution to the problem, or B, there is no solution to the problem.
True, true question. What happens like with the state, okay, project or anything else? Applicant submits everything, everything, uh, everything else is proceeded along the way, but like this case, they have, the state has a hundred and eighty days to.
But we, we could deem that application complete, we could approve.
Subject to.
Subject to.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just.
That's what we've been doing.
I realize that.
If we, if we were to go to, as Jamie suggested, two sixty day extensions for the applicant. Can we envision circumstances where, uh, the board needs more information? For example, the situation we have with, with the Raymond subdivision here, we're looking for some feedback from town accounting. Would it make sense also to have an extension available at the boards?
Well, I think, I, I think the determination of completeness, when you answer that question, if, if we needed to have questions answered, we could go to the applicant and say, before we. De- deem this application to be complete, we need to know A, B, and C, whatever that happens to be.
And the other, the other answer to that is, I think the extension should be always requested by the applicant instead of by the board. And, and here's how you would couch that argument or that question, saying, right now, we have a real serious problem with this, this doesn't meet our need. Now, you either give us an extension, or we're gonna act on the fact that this, this doesn't meet your ordinance, and therefore, we will deny you. So that's, that's the club, if you will, that says, you've got a choice. Get an extension to fix this, or else require us to act, and we will act, and it'll be a denial, which one do you want?
And then start all over again.
Right.
Yeah.
And then start all over again.
Well, and then you gotta start all over, pay the fee and so forth, and of course, they're gonna give you an extension.
One other reason I could think of it is. If the two extensions are used by the applicant, and, and the applicant has done everything in good faith and with all due speed. Perhaps it's just an unusual project, or there's an aspect of it that is unusual, they exhaust these two application, these two, uh, extension requests. If, if the board had the, uh, this discretion to have at its behest, an extension that could be used by the applicant?
The, the problem I would have is that that then becomes up to the board, and what prevents us from saying, no, I don't wanna give them the extension, or. Or, well, I, I could come up with almost any kind of a reason to, to simply say, no, it's, it's, it's not gonna happen. I'd rather have, I'd rather have the applicant say, the ordinance allows me to have this extension, I would like this extension. Putting it in there for the planning board simply allows us to drag our feet more.
I'm thinking of circumstances where perhaps they're waiting for a third party to act or to make a decision, and in particular, a governmental entity.
And I think that's where you can go subject to.
Right.
And you would do a subject to, and if they, if they, for instance, you know, this application, I guarantee you, it will act before D E P does, because it's so bad. And there's no penalty for not making that hundred day, eighty, eighty day, and Jamie probably tell you, I'm sure you've had this situation, I know I've had a project going two years, and it was supposed to be decided in a hundred and fifty days. And went two years, not a year, and. I'm sure you've had this situation, I know I've had a project going two years, and it was supposed to be deciding on a hundred and fifty days, and went two years, not a year, and, you know, it's ended.
Yeah, if, if we.
So, so, but if we, if, if we were to make that and say, subject to, and then D E P comes back, or whatever, the army corps says, oh, no, you need to change the plan for this reason, then they have to come back and make a modification of that plan. And they have to bring it back, and, you know, we have to figure out how to do with that situation.
Okay, well, that, that response satisfies me, and, um, so, are we, do we, uh, is there concurrence as to Jamie's suggestion for two sixty day?
I'm, I'm fine with it, I'm just trying to figure out some way, because to me, thirty days isn't enough time.
No, and you hear it from Paul. You know, you leave here one night, you've got two weeks essentially to get anything taken care of before you've gotta have plans back into TAD for two weeks later to be on the agenda, and it's.
The calendar's out of whack, and they don't give that.
And that, you know, ultimately, most of the time when things like that are going on, it's, it's subcontractors, sub consultants that are in the mix. Noise studies, nitrate studies, you know, lighting studies, that type of thing, not your typical, you know, site planning and stormwater stuff that the engineer himself is doing. So they're coordinating with a, you know, with one of their other consultants on the project. The other question I had, and didn't know if it would be of any benefit, on number five, within thirty days of public hearing or within sixty days after designating application complete, the board, you know, essentially should, should act. Which of those two take precedent? Either?
Either.
It's shortish.
That's on page one eighty-one, it's item number five, and what it, oh, one eighty-one also.
I'm going on one eighty-three.
Why?
Really?
I may not have the most.
I've got an old, we've got an old stack.
I, yeah, well, it's so torn up.
What's your date, Brandon? One eighty-three. No, no, no.
The reason for that was.
Mine, mine may be an older ordinance, but I don't think we changed the language.
This one says June thirtieth of two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
This is the, what's your number?
January two thousand.
Page one eighty-three.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah. She's behind you.
But I, the language, I think, is still consistent.
There's a reason for that, Jamie, I'm trying to remember where it is now. She does that. Three days after, or within sixty days after designating.
Well, we, we have to schedule the public hearing within thirty days of deem it complete. So I think that's why it says the six.
Unless we had, unless we had a public hearing that we did earlier.
Yeah, because we've said we could have more than one public hearing.
We have, but that was for subdivision.
Correct. Tommy, because you have one, the final public hearing.
If we, if we continue in the process of having the pu- public hearing like we did today, we determined it complete two weeks ago, we had the public hearing today, then I would just change it to say sixty days from the public hearing.
Right.
I like that, because clearly they're under the gun.
Yeah.
At thirty days.
Right.
I mean, and not through any fault of their own, because by the time you schedule it for the next meeting, it's really.
Yeah, so we could say.
The only thing about it is, uh, it's important it's done in October.
Right, right. I, but I, I'm just saying, you know, it's really, it's not a full thirty days, because you, you wanna get it, your application in, and then you wanna be two weeks before, so you can be on the next planning board agenda, and it's truncated.
Plus also too, you have, depending what time of year it is, your sixty days may fall in between holidays.
Well, so sixty days would give you the leeway that you need.
Exactly.
That you wouldn't get for thirty, and then you don't have to worry about calendar issues.
Unless it's weather.
Well, I mean, there's always, we have extenuating circumstances.
I mean, in, in terms of notifying the public earlier, at least so they can track these things, and then that way we also might get better turnout at public hearings as if we had a notification immediately upon receiving an application.
But that falls on your.
That falls on me, unless we do, unless I, unless we have something where the applicant's gotta provide the envelopes, the stamps, and, you know, and the addresses, and they provide it to me, and all they have to do is stuff, leave the notice.
So do we give notice of, a public notice of site walks?
No.
Okay, and should we? To a, to a, a butters at the very least?
Only if you, if you need an assistant to do all this paperwork.
Right, right. I've, no, but should, shouldn't the applicant, I would imagine the applicant would wanna get that done?
Yes, the app, well, no, the applicant in some cases may want to.
No, but what I'm saying is, is because ultimately, you know, you get a bunch of butters, and it just, it absolutely gums up the, the works, because there's still so much more discussion.
Yep.
So.
And we've seen that, we've heard, you've experienced this several times, we've, we've experienced with Oak Ridge already, and that's because under the, under the subdivision ordinance, I am required to notify people when we get an application. And I'm wondering if we should do the same thing here, where you're gonna have to jack up our prices, you know, for the fee, or else the applicant's gonna provide me the stamped envelopes with the addresses.
I don't think there's anything wrong with the applicant providing you a stamped envelopes, or postcards, or whatever it is.
No, I'd wanna send a full, the postcards get thrown out.
Right.
Even, even with that method, though, they still, the burden's still on you, because they, how do they get that, all the address, they have to come to your office.
They always come and get, yeah, but I usually try to, I just show them how to do it quickly, and then, although many times I just go, well, it's faster for me to do it than it is for me to show you.
And also, it's more likely that, it's also more likely that the butters will actually be notified, all of them.
Well, that's the other thing. I'm going to have to look anyway, I'm gonna check, I do a, I do a two fifty radius on my G I S, and it punches up the, the lots, and I'm gonna go through, okay, yeah, ah, you missed one, you know.
Well, the other thing is, as you're mentioning that, that's in with the town, because the town border, because we had that happen before, of next door town, a little butter.
Depending on what it is, that's what we also, we have, that's when we have joint needs, we have subdivision that, that crosses town borders, that's when the boards of the two towns are supposed to have subdivision meetings together, which is surely a nightmare.
Well, what I'm referring, I'm referring to the dam.
You've done that before.
I'm referring to the dam, and that was a joint.
Yeah, they weren't notified.
Well, and, and they didn't need to, because that was a surely insulating application for that, and that wasn't it.
Yeah, but they thought their knickers in a twist.
Well, they thought we shouldn't notify them, because Julie didn't care, you know.
Anyway, just a point of interest.
Or they weren't.
So I think we should vote on Jamie's proposal to make it sixty days.
You got a motion?
Yes, I move that we vote on Jamie's proposal to make the, the extension period sixty days as opposed to thirty.
Two.
Two.
Okay, two sixty day periods.
Two sixty days, yeah.
So in ten six three six, applicants may submit a written request to the planning board for no more than two sixty day extensions in order to amend the application prior to the issuance of.
Correct.
Review.
Other.
And, and the notification, the notification thing, I think you can either codify it in here, or else I could just put it on the application form, which you have to do this, yes.
Application form, so it's written down.
They have to give it to you.
All right, so I'll go on the application.
Yeah.
Sixty days starts after the public hearing.
Uh, whenever they ask for an extension.
That's true, this is when they ask for the extension, so we could have the public hearing, and.
They've got sixty days there, or thirty.
Thirty days from the public hearing. We have to make a decision.
I mean, that should give people plenty of time, I think, a hundred and twenty days.
Well, it, it.
Unless you have an extenuating circumstance, I understand that, but.
And Bill's a good example, you know, we, we have to make a decision in thirty days, they see that we've got some new problems, we tell them, you have some new problems here at the public hearing, you need to address it, they look at the, the, down the barrel, if I gotta get this done in two weeks, I can't do this, and they called me up and I said, you better file for a sixty day extension in order to solve this problem, just like they did with, with Bill's people. And I said, you're not gonna make this, you better file a thirty day extension, and he said.
But here's a question to ask along that way. Okay, we have a situation where somebody was renewing a permit. Okay? But does their permit, because they could drag their feet and extend their permit application for a hundred and twenty days and still do business as they're doing. How, I mean, you see where I'm going?
I understand what you're saying, but I disagree with, with what you said. Because they're up for renewal, they've gotta submit the paperwork. They can't drag their feet on pulling it in, they've gotta submit it all, and, and it has to get deemed to be complete. Once they submit the application, we're driving the bus right up to the public hearing.
Because we've had it happen before, they didn't bother to submit all the information, that's how we went round and round with uh, circumstances that we're still have dealing with.
Yep.
Yeah, it does say, may submit a request, the request is a request. If you, somebody's abusing it, the planning board would say, you're abusing this. Yeah, it says, may, may submit a written request to the planning board. Doesn't mean the planning board has to grant it.
Right, so implicit in the word request is that it's discretionary.
Discretionary, exactly.
I think that should be underlined.
I will second the motion, we even had a second.
Oh, thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
I don't think you need to, honestly. I don't underline any of these things.
Well, but you know where I was referring to, request, and because some people think as a request is all automatically a go.
And the way you recall. After the person gets denied.
And you, and you recall that, that that's what one of the attorneys for, uh, the butters in the Stifling case.
Right.
Uh, questioned whether or not it was just enough to grant a, a, an extension. The planning board said, yeah, we think it is, because it was.
Circumstances.
Circumstances, and they, they need time to work on the solution to, to your sake. And that's the plan, but the planning board would've said, no, you're right, no, we don't. We're gonna go with what you've given us.
Okay.
If we air, then that's what the Z D A is for.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded to change, uh, ten six three six to two sixty day extensions. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous. Now we have to take that to, to a public hearing. Making motion.
I'll second that, Roger.
What's my opinion?
Not.
Oh, I thought you were gonna.
No.
Okay. We, we have a motion to send, a motion in the second.
Well, the motion is to send it to public hearing.
To send it to public hearing.
Here it is. In two weeks.
When, Roger?
Can't do it in two weeks, I don't have enough time. Remember, I gotta, I gotta do fourteen days prior to.
Well, how much time we have before the, um, town meeting?
Six weeks, eight weeks.
So enough time to get, uh, on the warrant, for Slackman, has to go all the way through that.
Yeah, but that's, that's a seven day prior to.
Okay.
So.
Next public hearing would be when?
We're looking at May ninth.
Well, is there.
We can't, we can't do it on the eighth, unless we do it on May second, on, on, on an off Thursday.
And I would suggest you don't wanna do an off day, because we are really getting backed up. I've got a lot of applications coming in. And, and to have, I mean, it might be better to have it on an off day.
And, and for whatever it's worth, I know that we're getting burnt out on doing the, uh, comp plate committee.
Yeah.
We have a meeting next week, that's the last one that we're having.
No, I doubt we have free, we had at least, we had one free week, and it was next week.
Oh, Corinthians.
According to the calendar.
Double overtime.
It's, it's the last one, and we're done, because the only thing that we have left to resolve is, is family farms, and, and all of the stuff that we've been working on, and if we don't get it finished, we can't make a public hearing, so we're, we're just gonna drop the whole thing until, until the fall, if not later.
Well, for commercial too?
No, commercial's done.
Okay, I mean, uh.
These guys have to send, have you, has, has everybody looked at those documents? I sent you, I sent you digital copies, did everybody look at it? Because I have hard copies if you didn't.
No more paper for me. I'm, I'm good for it. So I have a question. So this was the question I was gonna ask Sandra, but then I thought maybe it would be better to ask you first. But what do you, what is the plan to deal with people who ask for forgiveness rather than permission? I mean, obviously, the, the Motor Land thing is, is one instance where he was supposed to post his bond, didn't, but went ahead and did ninety percent of the work before posting the bond. You, you've had other instances, I can think of one other instance with a developer who went ahead, one that you just, uh, spoke about not too long ago in this meeting, who went ahead and did everything and had to post the full bond even though it was complete. But what is, what do we have, what mechanism is there to stop people from going forward with projects like this before, um, you know, all their ducks are in a row?
How about in the, how about in the posting of a, in the requirement of a posting of a bond or a letter of credit? If we're making an applicant do that, I think it's gotta be for a really good reason, and that makes it important. Maybe important enough that they, if they don't do it, then the permit, the app, the, the, uh, approval is automatically vacant.
That's, that's, that's.
I mean, there has to be some.
Don't really pay attention to it.
Value, that stops.
Nobody goes to the bank, which will really get their attention.
That stops people from acting with, you know.
But short of, and we tried with the applicant that I mentioned earlier, we had, we had him come in to see us three or four different times, and he promised that he was gonna do everything, and he went out and he did something completely different every time.
Well, I know we're not in California, but in California, if you do some of this stuff without doing what you're required, they make you take it apart. They will come out and they will make you take it apart.
There are towns not that far from you that will make you toe the line.
Yeah, they'll, they'll basically shut you down, they'll have the cops come out, really, it's literally cops come out.
I'm telling you.
Say, vacate the property now.
That's right. The whole, everything stops.
Stop work.
We do have the authority to rescind the permit, according to the town attorney. However, it's gonna result in a lot of legal action.
But, 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 and, and not only that, that takes time, organization, and effort on the planner's part, and so forth. It just seems to me it's a lot better if the process is self-executed. And there's, and that way, it's really incumbent on the, on the applicant to pay attention to that.
So it'd be something where you'd say, if the applicant thinks work without meeting all the conditions that is required, then the application is on that reward.
That's right.
That's right.
And fine.
Well, but, but, and how, how do that's in here? If you look at, at item number seven, on, in just what we're looking at, no plenary site plan approval shall become effective until a whole bunch of stuff, and performance assurances supplied to the town.
And how many times?
But that doesn't stop me from going through and starting to do my work.
Right, because there's no.
But that doesn't start, it helps, that doesn't stop me from going out there and deciding I'm gonna do something in the, my backyard that's, I need a permit for.
It would if all the people working on your property and all the, were fined along with, I'm, I'm, I'm not talking about fining people and having to keep track of all of them, but there has to be some trigger that is onerous enough that people will make sure that they get the important things done. The fact that we were asked to approve a forty thousand dollar bond after he's completed ninety percent of the work without actually explaining what the ninety percent was before it was asked, or the ten percent. I mean, I understand what Sandra was doing, she was representing her client, and I don't have any problem with that, but there has to be some trigger.
I think, I think Jamie, but.
To my point, that, and that is not.
It didn't sound like it was.
No. I, I, I agree, but I think if we put it in ten seven, it would be better. Performance assurances, where it says that you're supposed to give us this money, but we could also put in a statement to the effect that if work is started before the performance bond is posted, then the, then your permit is automatically voided.
But does it, should it only apply, and maybe this is something for Jens, should it, should. it, should it only apply to uh surety bonds or should it apply to other work that moves forward without a, you know, complete application or preliminary applications or, you know,
My thinking was in particular to bonding requirements. Now, cause that's for the protection of the town and the and the neighbor.
Okay, so and those are usually fairly decent sized projects as well. So I don't have any problem.
Well, we're required, on all site plans, we're required, site plan approvals are supposed to have a surety of some sort. It's not, it's not really, to be honest with you, it's not elective.
Then we should do it. If it's not elective, we need to do it. And and but I do think if if there's some way to say, you know, if you if you don't post the bond, if you start working, you haven't posted the bond, your your entire permit is null and void. You can't continue to work. And guess what? You're gonna come back and go through the whole process all over again.
That's a civil matter in which.
It and I mean, if the if the approval was rescinded as a matter of law, as it relates to uh failure to meet bonding and um the and the applicant required to post in his, in the discretion of the board, up to fifty percent higher bonding for reaproval, that would really get people's attention.
Why are you sending a message?
That's why Asako, Asako's bonding requirement is all in fifty percent.
Right out of the gate.
Right out of the gate, and they said you lose that fifty percent if you.
Okay, one question along that lines.
I like that too.
And one question along that lines, as this applicant, okay, do we have anything in there? So they're saying they have to follow the site plan or the engineering plan because we've had that happen, the where they did not follow the engineering plan and they did it as they built, as they wanted to and as an after fact, where we had to come back and redesign everything so it was, it's actually on paper instead of a, oh.
It's incredible. This is all the same applicant.
Is that a cocktail applicant?
No, I'm saying.
It's incredible to think it was all the same applicant, too.
Then it is all the same applicant, Susan, that's why I I'm referring this to where I spoke tonight.
But another, another thing should be pointed out, I think like this lawyer um asked like she was mentioned, she was surprised they got a building permit without having this time, so that's a mechanism, I I I'm surprised, how how does that happen?
Well, it was a different. It was already built. But the point was they, it was, it was a conversion, it was a conversion of an existing building for one use. It was a conversion of an existing building to a different use.
Yeah, without the outside.
That's right. But that's why, that's why the building permit wasn't, wasn't the trigger here.
But how about the electrical?
But I thought they had modifications for thousands of things like that.
Commercial, you do.
Jimmy does, yeah.
Yes, but that hasn't triggered it?
It had already been built.
Not, no, since they're changing the whole lighting around and everything else.
Outside?
And the courtyard, yes. That whole courtyard.
I don't think they, they, they did not get that inspected by an electrical.
Yeah, well, we heard tonight they didn't get inspected by anybody.
They didn't get inspected by anybody. I didn't know what was happening. I didn't know what was happening, they didn't notify.
This is what I'm saying.
Only one person.
They've only been doing site improvements.
But that includes doing, doing all the lighting?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that they got it from Jimmy. But but you gotta come and you gotta, you're supposed to come and get the permit.
The secretary of law's seen, they just do whatever they want.
They have.
We dealt with people who do what they feel like doing.
They have. Look what they did for the underground water lines, the natural gas pipelines and everything else along the way, until we made.
Corinne's question.
Before you guys really run away with this, uh we didn't really decide on a public hearing date, time, would we?
ASAP.
I was looking, May has five Thursdays.
I believe the date that we have to have everything done by is the twelfth.
You guys mentioned the ninth.
May tw, May twelfth is the, is the, is the drop dead date?
Is May, what day of the week is May twelfth?
Monday, never Sunday.
We've done, we've done it, just before the town meeting, we've we've done it.
Well, I I think that's the issue that we're looking at. I think it's it's thirty days before the town meeting, we're just gonna put it there.
Oh, thirty days, I need thirty days for town meeting for for commercial. I need thirty days to send the commercial ad, uh commercial animal husbandry and the farm to the commission.
But I I thought we had been given a date of May twelfth. Maybe it was by by Keith who said we had to have everything done by that point in order to get it on the warrant.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to decide, actually, I have to write the warrant fast sooner than that, I have to put together the the sample warrant that you guys want before the end of the month. Because I, you know, I would withdraw if we don't get anywhere or if it fails at a public hearing, but I have to, I have, because the book's gotta be done. And we have to do it at least a month in advance.
Right.
For the book to be done. So we're gonna have to pretty much wrap this up quickly as to what we have.
I thought our deadline was tonight to make the decision. Because it has to thirty days before and you get a response back.
From the commissioner.
Yes.
We're required to get, to do it thirty days prior to the action, which will be thirty days from the June twelfth or June thirteenth.
So.
To meet the state law, to meet the state law. Now, you know. You would want to know more, you would wanna get more time than that because if the commissioner comes and says, I want to approve this, you need to fix this and this and this, it's sunk anyways. Then it'd say, withdraw, pull it from the, pull it from the agenda, because we're gonna have to do the public hearing all over again.
Yep.
And then, and it won't, there won't be enough time.
Well.
I mean, I can send the commercial, I'm gonna send the commercial with your approval. I'm gonna send the commercial off to the, off to the commissioner on Tuesdays.
Well, I would suggest that because if it's some, something comes back, okay, we can always pull it if we have to, but it's not by being pulled by the selectmen or or being backstabbed, we could turn around and say due to uh uh state regulations and that will turn out, so we aren't at fault.
Well, and that's what we did last June, if you recall.
We got.
We still got hammered.
Got sidelined on that one.
Yeah, we we did, we got bushwhacked.
Okay.
But the simple fact is that that decision was never made. It was a good idea because once something is denied, it's tough to bring it back to that, to the town meeting and that's why the decision was made at that meeting when we saw which way it was gonna go. That, and also because there was a, that technical error that we made that we 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 messed off the pull list thing. And so we would do the same thing again. If the commissioner comes back and says, no, we don't accept this, I can't imagine why he would, because it gives him all the responsibility for it. He might, he might deny it because we're giving them the responsibility to regulate. Yep, it could, it was good, I can't imagine, but good, saying, I don't wanna do this.
Well, then.
Chair, to Corinne's question. And and I'm sort of directed to you, Ted. This doesn't strike me as the kind of thing that people are gonna come out in droves uh to weigh in on, this extension that we need a public hearing on. Okay, so can we not shoehorn that into the ninth?
Yeah. Uh, let's see, what I got. Yeah, I can get it, I can get it to ninth easily, I can get it to the twenty fifth.
Okay, I move that we uh schedule a public hearing for the ninth of May on this issue.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to have.
Okay, it was, you do, there was initially a motion and a second by Mornin' McGinn and then the topic just got totally changed and no date was actually discussed.
Never followed through on on the initial.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there was an initial motion and a second, just no date confirmed.
Okay, so you guys need to.
Meld those motions.
Meld, yeah.
Yeah, so Roger, just set, add a date to it, to your motion.
Yeah, that was.
Obviously, my second and.
The ninth. So what day, we're gonna do it on the ninth?
May ninth.
Okay.
Is my understanding.
Yes.
Okay. And the sixteenth, is there something big on the sixteenth too of May?
No, we're not needed on the sixteenth.
We're gonna have a sixteen.
We're gonna have a day.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, enjoy it.
Okay, I was gonna say, cause I can't be here, but okay, I guess it doesn't matter, nobody cares.
Are you guys all gonna be able to make May ninth?
No, not my Cristobal and Chell and Be.
I'm gonna be out of town.
That's a Thursday?
Oh, yes.
That's a Thursday, I'm gonna be in Wisconsin.
It's a standard, actually, it's a second Thursday.
I have to leave on the third of May.
Bring me some cheese back.
Driving?
Okay. Yep, yep, gonna drive out and then I have to go to Michigan after.
The Penitent Park.
I'll be gone for about three weeks.
Are you going to Madison?
The Penitent Park in Michigan.
No, I'm going to Anna. Actually, I'm going to Grand Rapids.
Oh, what, you said Wisconsin?
Oh, I'm going to Appleton, Wisconsin.
Oh, Appleton, Wisconsin is nice.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
I have a badger. You went to that, I said, yes.
At any rate, motion has been made and seconded for May ninth for the, for the public hearing on the extension. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One other question about public hearings. Can we have it in such ways so uh with the newspaper situations and everything else as a fourteen days, can we shorten that fourteen to a ten or?
State law. It's actually thirteen days. It's it's on day thirteen and day seven. I was doing fourteen just in case those guys.
I'm just trying to expedite.
But it's thirteen and seven is what the state law is for any change to the earnings for the subdivision, as you know, we don't go to public hearing. Maybe we don't go to town meeting.
Okay, what about applicant public hearing?
Applicant public hearing, that's seven days.
Okay, that's where I was trying to get my days coordinated.
We have it organized now, so applicants are seven days prior to the meeting across the board for everything except for subdivision. You wanna change subdivision, you can do that. And you don't have to go to town meeting. Remember, any subdivision ordinance changes you want to make, all you have to do is have a public hearing. You don't, it does not get approved by by the town. The planning board has the authority to make changes to the subdivision.
Except for roads.
Including roads.
Including roads.
No.
Yes.
No, we can't because anywhere, private ways are not in our.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't make you.
They're they're not included in in that, in that mix. Okay, so listen, let's go to item two, which is to schedule the public hearings for the land use ordinance changes, home occupations, and there should be two of them, type one and type two, and that is available in R one, R two and R three. Contract the yards.
Which you've already done.
Which we've already done. R one regulations, zone map changes and the commercial animal husbandry regulations.
I hope it's been settled. I hope that this portion of the R one, I've said it, so I hope that we've actually discussed it.
Actually, it was pretty settled at the last meeting. I didn't know it would've been. Productive, Jamie.
Yes.
Was it? It was, it was, it was pretty civilized.
Yep.
It goes to the previous meeting, actually.
Right, which is unsatisfied. Which I missed, sadly.
Oh, too bad.
So we're looking for a public hearing day?
We got it.
We have it.
We have it.
In two weeks.
Oh, two weeks?
No, we're not doing it in two weeks. We're doing all of these on. Oh, I thought we would just, no, we just did the, the extensions.
That was the extension.
The extension.
We're gonna do everything.
Everything at once.
Everything at once.
Let's make a motion. I wanna be here.
I like to get it out on fourth.
Beg you on the second.
So call us from the car.
Hey, I like to, I like to make it.
Put a speakerphone in your car.
That's, that's fine, that's.
Let me just, let me just, let me paint a picture for you folks, okay?
Black or white or color?
This is what's gonna be on the next agenda, unless it gets too much and Rich is gonna have to throw somebody off, it's gonna be this and first come, first served. We're gonna have these guys, my guesses.
Hopefully.
We're gonna have Motorland.
We're gonna have Motorland.
Okay. We're gonna have Oak Ridge subdivision, I just got that today.
Which one is that you mentioned earlier?
South Skinnies.
Is that the one, the rural way one?
Oh, okay. Yep, I got you.
Yep, maybe, I have an old.
Did they figure that out with all the abutters and the road?
Oh, yeah.
And he's, yeah, he's given the secret work and wants to figure it out.
Good for him.
We've got the uh, the um, we've got the farm stand, which I haven't reviewed yet. I just got it today and I was up to my neck with other stuff. We have Twatiers back. You have Dwight, Ringan Acres.
Assuming that they, Bernie's get together, yeah.
I'm missing something on that.
You're playing this all one night?
Yeah, that's what's on the agenda for next week.
For next week.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Next meeting.
So that will be a continuation to the ninth. So you can, the only thing is you're probably gonna knock off, you might knock off or you might not knock off, are gonna be the the uh, let's assume they'll run the machine, we're able to get that all squared away. And well, that's it. Maybe, maybe Ringan Acres, one way or the other. But that doesn't, even if you gave the waivers, they still have work to do.
Farm stand?
We have, maybe, pardon?
Farm stand?
Farm stand's there too.
No, I mean, is that gonna be?
I don't know, I haven't, their problem is they got more than two acres of wetland, which makes it a shoreline zone. What I told Jimmy is go do the, go do the, I'll be coordinating engineer survey methodology to determine whether or not it's contiguous, if it's all contiguous. That means setting up grids, that means actually doing the soil test and actually looking at the vegetation. A lot of it's typha, cacti, so it's been cut, so I'm not sure you're gonna be able to do it, but I haven't looked at it yet. I've I've done that same methodology myself in doing, doing donation, right, on the Stockway Industrial Park and actually came up with enough, you know, it was a hummocky land, I came up with enough, enough land that it was primarily upland versus versus wetland and you, it allows you to do that because if your client spends money, mine was a bank who ordered it, I loaded, so they spent money and worked. I don't know if it'll work here, we'll find out.
Says the lot is pending, so.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I know, they, they have a deposit.
Yeah, yeah, processes.
They own it, okay.
And is the miniature golf done too? Is miniature golf done also?
Oh, they're done, yeah.
They're done, so they're not, not coming back.
I'm, they just closed.
Did they really? I was wondering.
It was a nightmare, but they finally closed. I'm still waiting for the money.
And they have a surety bond also?
Yeah, they got a bigger.
Yeah.
And there was a classic example, we need to make sure that they give us the surety bond.
I, I, I'm confident they would have been in a discussion with their attorneys. And then, then these guys are, kind of boy scouts, sorry.
Yeah, they seem pretty buttoned up for not knowing what we're doing.
Yeah.
But, uh, they've done a pretty good job for, and these guys are amateurs.
Yeah.
This is the first time we were doing anything like this, so.
Yes, but I'm.
They're very, very diligent and.
Oh, yeah.
Boy scouts have a good sense of the word.
Yes.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, to me, boy scouts mean.
Be nice!
A very high, no, I was a boy scout.
It's a high standard.
Okay, so you're using a different sense.
I was OA.
Using a more rugged sense.
I don't want Chester Pim not.
So, you know, I am, uh.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a big meeting.
We need to make a motion on item two.
ASAP.
So, all that goes to the ninth, unless you wanna do it on the second.
Mine.
Ninth, second. Alright. Then someone's gonna, the chairman's gonna have to bump somebody, because we're not gonna be able to do this, so.
Yeah, if we have to bump somebody.
Actually, the chairman won't be here, it's gonna be the vice chairman.
I can, I can bump somebody, I'll be here on the twenty fifth.
Okay.
Because we've got a meeting on the twenty fifth and on the twenty sixth, I can walk into your office and we can set the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a spot I didn't know.
Take care of that problem.
Jamie, he'll be here for this, right? Since you're gonna be the, the head pool.
Don't anticipate not being here on the, uh, first, second Thursday of May.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what, you're gonna be gone then?
I said I don't anticipate being gone.
Okay, that's a, yeah, that's a second thing, second thing, right, yeah, okay.
Alright. So, motion's been made or has it?
I start to make one.
Okay.
Make a motion that, uh, item two, schedule for public hearing for May ninth.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to schedule public hearings for May ninth for home occupations, contract yards, R one regs, zone map changes, and commercial animal husbandry farm regulations. Any discussion?
Make sure all annoyed purses prior last year's meeting are notified.
They will be, they will be notified next Thursday.
Well, reason I, that's one of the reasons why I asked at our other joint meeting last week if there was any questions or so there was no landmines.
Yep.
With somebody in the public forum.
There may be one more item to put on, oh, before we do it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? There may be one more item.
To add to the agenda?
To, to the public hearings.
Oh, to the public hearing.
We're trying to get hobby farms, or whatever word that, family farms, or whatever it is that they wanna use, finished. If, Donna seems to think that we can get that finished next Thursday. If we can get it finished next Thursday, then on the twenty fifth, we're gonna have to add that to this public hearing mix for May ninth.
Which means you want it to be agenda, we're not meeting next week.
We are meeting next week.
No, you turn and look at your, the town calendar, we're not meeting. This is the first time we have.
If we don't, if we don't meet, it's not gonna get done. I'll tell you that right now.
Guess what?
You're gonna have to do it at the meeting in order for me to advertise that.
No, if, we won't be getting anything from, from the comp plan, uh, planning board committee.
Cause it's not a, it's not a.
It's not a planning board meeting?
Yes.
How it is it?
Make it one. Cause here, here's the deal, otherwise, R one goes with animal husbandry, it goes with commercial animal husbandry, and then, and then, we have to do something with animal husbandry because that's because, oh boy.
Yeah.
So, you wanna make next Thursday a planning board meeting in addition to a comp plan meeting, so.
So, it is a, it is a planning board. It is a planning board meeting. It's a joint meeting, but it'll be meeting, not a workshop, and we'll schedule a vote on it. The planning board members will schedule a vote on that. Because what will happen, otherwise, if not, then we've got a problem with R one. Because remember, R one, there'll be a little conflict because R one is, says that, for animal husbandry, it's five, it's basically, an animal husbandry is defined as five or five, five thousand pounds of animals, and it's for commercial purposes, so we're gonna have a conflict between those two. So, either that comes out and then you can't have any animals unless you're a commercial farm in the R one. Right?
Oh, that's not gonna fly.
Give the information to, uh, Donna.
Oh, I'm gonna send out everything Tuesday. I can't do it Monday because I'm not here, but Tuesday, I'm gonna send it out, not here tomorrow. Monday is a holiday. And, uh, so it'll be going on Tuesday, so there won't be a lot of advanced notice.
But one, one way or the other, we have, it's, it's gonna end on Thursday.
It's got.
We can't do it after Thursday, we don't have time to do anything to get it on the town warrant, so we're not gonna, we're just gonna stop. If we don't get that section finished off for, uh, family farms, then we're not gonna get it finished up. And we'll have to tackle it at some other point.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
At the last meeting, we said we were getting to the, the commercial end done, and that was it. We were not addressing home.
We have to deal with the homes.
And we said we.
Because of the conflict in, in the ordinance.
Either that, look, either, here's how I would recommend we do it. We, if you're gonna take R one to, to town meeting, then it's, there's gonna have to be a definition change. If we can't get the hobby farm thing done, holy knuckle.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
No, no, the holy knuckle being that, no, it's okay, I think we can do it. I'll figure out something. Because if we can't do it then, we have to do a slight change to animal husbandry. Um, and change it to non-commercial, the definition of non-commercial, for five units or more. So, we're gonna have to put in an alternative residential, alternative non-commercial one.
I would.
And that says five animal units and that's it.
That's right.
And then that would be in other districts, right?
Yeah, so if we don't get.
For all residential districts.
Just a stop.
That, that's the stop gather. If you can't do it, then that's the stop gather we put in.
And we can show up at town meeting and say, this is the problem, if, you know, we're gonna do this, if we don't make this and say five animal units, you, nobody in a residential district will have a hobby farm.
And then what we would do is I think we would include that into the R one.
R one, R two, and R three.
Make it all one warrant.
Yeah.
Make it one warrant.
Oh, I agree, make it one warrant.
So that it, it either stands together or falls down together. So, we don't have the problem of conflicts.
Yep.
This passed, this didn't, and now they're in conflict.
I think we were gonna separate it.
We were, but if we don't, if one passes and the other one doesn't, it throws the whole thing off, Marty.
Well, we've been, the commercial end of it, that was, this hobby farm, family hobby farm was a new dream this year.
I know, we had no intention of doing it.
Huh?
We had no intention of doing it.
Then I would say leave it alone, and the fact is, take the commercial end, and let's deal with that first. I mean, simple on plate, instead of trying to make everybody happy or anything else, we got way to aid and backstab last year, let's keep to our guns and do what we said we were gonna do. Not trying to make everybody happy along a hobby farm or whatever else, no.
Same advice.
I agree.
Yeah, I go, alright, okay.
Alright.
We will cancel next Thursday's meeting. Isn't, why are we gonna have it? We're not gonna get hobby farms done.
Let's get it done.
I just heard.
Let's just get it done. Doesn't mean we have to take it to town meeting, just let's get it done.
I like my theory better.
Well, we'll do it the way Marty suggests, and that is.
No, we're not gonna do it in time enough. In other words, you're saying, cancel next Thursday's meeting or don't.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, otherwise.
Well, I vote for that.
Okay.
Okay.
That'll work.
Yeah.
All those in, all those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay?
I second.
I give man a motion first.
Marty, make a motion.
Yeah, no, no next Thursday.
Okay, somebody second.
I seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. We're done with the comp plan.
I still have to change that definition though.
You could change it, but you don't need us.
Make a change in the definition.
So that it works the way it is, and so we can take R one.
And nine.
Hey, my wife doesn't complain, but she's just.
And then commercial farm.
She said, yeah, that's what you've been doing, every Thursday night.
Every Thursday night.
I know, it's been a long.
And it has, yeah.
And.
And Kathy doesn't complain at all.
But what it means is I've gotta also make that change to R two and to R three. And then put it in there for R two and R three.
We said that already.
And we can make any changes at some future point, okay. Plan is reported.
Marty, what am I gonna report on?
I like to know, one, what's going on with DuBois. Everything has been, so we had a big public hearing or whatever else, and nobody else knows what's going on.
DEP's still not made a ruling whether or not they're gonna yank the permit.
Why?
I don't know. Not my job.
Well, that's a government general issue turner, like we're dealing with Paul turner. Don't they have to rule in eighty, a hundred and eighty days or whatever else?
Oh, you've never, you've never dealt with DEP.
No.
Oh, the E B.
DEP doesn't, never needs to be that way.
So, what kind of, so what kind of briefs does she?
I don't, I don't, she's been working on all those other lawsuits. Those lawsuits got revived when DuBois did not meet that consent decree. Because originally, all those things dropped off the table and, and they didn't meet the consent decree. I mean, when the consent decree was, was, um, decided and agreed to, and then when they didn't meet the terms of that consent decree, then all these cases came back.
So, are we still being personally as lawsuits?
Yeah.
When, when, huh?
You're not, you weren't part of it.
And Sue's not.
And you are, Tom, that's right.
When we got told that they were back in the plate again.
Chip is still on it.
Chip's still on it for actions he did. And I, and I, and actually, the case now has also revolved around that, the, the famous, not only the planners memo, but also the planners, uh.
Editor.
Editors.
Are you the planner?
I am the planner.
Wow.
The famous red wave memo, as it's called, which is your staff notes. It was an illegal, it was an illegal, um.
Evidently, he couldn't report to us about what was going on.
It was, it was basically, uh, an illegal, it's like.
A red herring memo.
And what about, what about the, uh, the suit where, or the case where they found some panties out in the schoolyard?
Out in the schoolyard, yeah.
Yeah.
Any names?
That's true. I, I really don't. I don't wanna discuss this anymore, okay?
Okay, yeah, let's.
No.
Okay.
Turn it on, so.
What else do we have going on right now?
Wait a minute.
We're very, we have, uh, I'm seeing a lot of activity. Uh, I am actually getting inundated right now with roads, with private ways. Uh, every day, I'm consumed with private ways, people coming in. Holbert's come back, they're getting their application. I have five private ways coming at me right now. I've also been designated by the towns, by the selectmen, as being the administrator of this program.
A private way program?
Yeah.
The private ways are.
That's me.
So, do you have to wear a new hat or?
He's bizarre, he can do that.
But, but I still have finished with DuBois yet. I wanna ask one question.
I.
The fact is.
Why is this not pertaining to a lawsuit?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Not pertaining to lawsuit, but is anybody gonna get fined?
That pertains to the lawsuit.
No.
That's what the lawsuit's about.
No, it's not. I'm saying, they're still doing business as is.
Right.
And we're talking about penalties or anything else.
That's something the judge will make a determination.
That's the ADK determination that the judge will decide.
Correct.
And until the judge rules.
Okay, I didn't think.
I will give you this piece of information, the, um, uh, Atlantic Resource Consultants is, is DuBois' engineer, and they have submitted an application to DEP to amend their existing permit. To include a lot of amendments and site, plan of chan- uh, changes out on the site that would alleviate their pollution. Still don't have a permit for us, but that's what, that's.
And we don't have to.
I think you can.
Well, I don't think we should either. We don't need to discuss that way.
We don't need to discuss any of that, and we have no, no.
No, by reason, nothing's.
But I just wanted to let you know that they have submitted such the, uh, the.